Good evening, and sorry for the delay for those of you in the public and on Zoom. We had some technical difficulties with the Internet in the building tonight. So I would like to call this meeting to order at the time of 6:51 PM.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Assemblyman Ken Cooley.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. Ms. Jones, roll call, please.
Thank you. We received a fast notification that Chair Yourwood would be absent this evening. Director Mattis.
Here.
Director Langin.
Here.
Secretary Sloan.
Here.
And Vice Chair Danzel.
Here.
Let's move on to item B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Where members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the manager staff. And at this time, I do not see any requests.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let's move on to item C, special items.
Thank you. Item C1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-35 honoring retired California State Assemblyman Ken Cooley for over 20 years of dedicated service to the residents of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. And we'd like to ask that you adopt the resolution first, and then we'll do the presentation afterwards.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any public comment on this?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Directors, do you have any comments on this before we call for a vote?
Will it make a motion?
Second.
So I'm gonna read the motion up.
Okay, please, Tim.
I move that we adopt Resolution 22/23-35 honoring retired California State Assemblyman Ken Cooley for over 20 years of dedicated service to the residents of the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
Thank you. I have a motion by Secretary Sloan and a second by Director Mathis. All those in favor will call out, please.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood is absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. At this time, I will have the General Manager, Patrick Clark, can read the resolution.
Um, so I am honored to present Resolution Number 22-23-35, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District honoring Assemblyman Ken Cooley for over 20 years of dedicated service to the residents of CRPD. Whereas Assemblyman Ken Cooley has faithfully served the district and represented its residents well since being elected to the inaugural Rancho Cordova City Council in 2002 and the California State Assembly in 2012. And whereas Ken has always demonstrated a strong belief in public service from an early internship at the San Francisco City and County Board of Supervisors to serving in the California State Assembly in various capacities since 1977. He has maintained a visible presence in the CRPD community from walks with the mayor to attending district legacy events. And whereas Ken and his wife Sydney have lived in Rancho Cordova for over 40 years, raising their family here and enjoying all the outdoor recreational opportunities within the boundaries of CRPD and surrounding areas, particularly kayaking along the American River and acting as stewards of our natural resources. And whereas, as council member of a brand-new city, Ken was instrumental not only in building Rancho Cordova's foundation, but in the development of City Hall itself. He organized the My City Hall event to include residents in memorializing the future City Council chambers in 2005. He served as mayor during critical periods of growth for CRPD acknowledging the importance of a symbiotic, 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 not the relationship between the agencies and has been a positive and caring leader to the constituents we both serve in January 2023 and was bestowed the key to the city of Rancho Cordova. And whereas in demonstrating values consistent with those of the Cordova and providing programs for the youth of our community, Ken has invested in mentoring programs and has volunteered his time to organize excursions in nature and activities for children of all ages. Page two. There's a lot to say about you. Whereas as soon as he was elected to the State Assembly, Ken worked hard to create cohesiveness within his incoming class, taking lessons from those who had gone before. He is well-known for facilitating events that brought members together and formed friendships. And whereas in the legislature, Assemblyman Cooley introduced and co-authored numerous parks, recreation, and special district-related bills and resolutions that promote and protect protection of parklands and recognizes the historical significance and unique contribution of park systems to the well-being of all people. And whereas Ken authorized authored Assembly concurrent resolutions, ACR Number 183, recognizing California State Parks Discovery Day, and Assembly ACR 89, proclaiming Special Districts Week. And whereas recognizing the vital historical value of trees, Assemblyman Cooley advocated for preserving and repurposing significant trees at Civil War Memorial Road at Capitol Park that were filled by the storm. And whereas Assemblyman Cooley co-signed a legislative coalition letter to Governor Newsom in May 2021 to advocate for the extension of access to fiscal assistance for independent special districts impacted by COVID-19. And whereas Ken co-authored Senate concurrent Resolution SCR Number 552, proclaiming July 2021 as California Parks and Recreation Professionals, celebrating the accomplishments and resiliency of parks and the recreation professionals throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Ken co-authored ACR 199, declaring July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better. And whereas Ken is a consumer, consume, net, sorry, I knew I was gonna do that one. Historian with a passion and talent for giving towards the state capital, working to preserve the symbolism intrinsic to California. And California can always be relied upon to share its historical anecdotes in any situation. His institutional knowledge is unparalleled in his contributions to the vitality of Rancho Cordova and the state are undeniable. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District wish to honor Assemblyman Ken Cooley and that Ken for two decades of dedication for our constituents and for its partnership with CRPD. And this will be passed and adopted the 15th day of February 2023. With that, I'd like to give any round of applause.
If we didn't understand, we'd work until we get a photo opportunity.
That was a lot of words. Last, we just want to start, you know, government, our work in government is collaboration. And uh it's often a collaboration that faces difficult things. And that's not just on bad days. That is sort of the work of government. And thinking about it, as you were struggling with your technical difficulties, uh, I bring you FDR, who had sort of the spirit of this morning, of this evening's moment, as you struggle over that. FDR, famous, he said, "The test of a fresh intelligence is your ability to hold two opposed ideas in the mind at the same time and still retain the ability to function." Well, sure, for example, be able to see that things are hopeless. They have to be determined, make them other ones. And honestly, so much of what we do in government is of that character. Because actually, really important things are not looking impossible. And it's our work kind of takes up to look simple. And grind your way at it, so it after a while really appears highly improbable. And just keep grinding away to bring it to the point of inevitable. You know, I think back with the city form. I've been pleased to partner with this park district for 20 years. In the city form on its own, there was some money from a bond act that passed that CRPD decided to grant for a couple of grants, nearly $5 billion. And they were from very specialized accounts. But honestly, they probably were going to end up voiding sort of coastal California for variety of reasons. The governor should change. And great, David S. Governor left. And Arnold was the new governor. And of all things, a former intern, my current Deputy Director of State Parks, Senator Mitchell, who worked with me in 1990, was sitting at the desk trying to decide what to do with grant applications. So since I do live evidence collaboration, um, David Sanger and I put together a letter that went to State Senator David Cox, State Senator Deborah Ortiz, State Assemblymember Alan Akadishi, and State Assemblymember Gerald Steinberg, so two Democrats, two Republicans, asking them to weigh in on behalf of Park District Grants, which we're going to rebuild White Rock Park and also the major sports center. And um, so that was a case of the city actually stepping up to bring in an appeal to the state government, put money in the pockets of CRPD. And of course, if that all sorted out, about $5 million came in, was done. Uh, and that is a case of art district and the city and the state coming up. And without Bernard Parsons, which is very important to light the heart of our democracy. So I just want to say it is a great honor to be here. I certainly do love the outdoors and parks matter in my life, in the life of my grandkids, our entire community. Um, and uh this is like the best recitation of sort of a lot of important elements of my career. I just appreciate the CRPD seeking to be out with this recognition tonight. And uh, thank you very much. Thank you.
So here is the actual confirmation for your living room or whatever you'd like. It was probably a little too big for the refrigerator. But if we should have the board down, it will do a photo opportunity, please.
They need to be wherever. Oh.
You are in front. You're the man of the day.
All right. Do we need to turn it and accept the way to? For your glares. Thank you. Good work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, uh on item B, consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have three items for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we have any items that need to be pulled by the staff, any by the public?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Any items that need to be pulled by the board? Thank you. If here is none, do I have a motion? I move I move that we uh adopt the E1 and D2 and D3 on the consent calendar and presented by. Thank you. I have a vote in by Secretary Sloan. Do I have a second? Second. Call vote?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood is absent.
Thank you. Motion. Item E is presentations. I see none. Item F, committee reports, see none. Item G, public hearings, I see none. Let's move on to item H, regular count.
Thank you. Item H1 is our Little League Baseball Field in honor and memory of Dennis Lamontia and allow the Rancho Cordova Little League to install a memorial sign in his honor under the scoreboard located in the outfield of Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field. And I'd like to welcome to present Recreation Superintendent Chase Mitchellany.
Good evening, members of the board. Today, I'm here to ask you to approve the dedication of the Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field in honor and memory of Dennis Lamontia and allow Rancho Cordova Little League to install a memorial sign in his honor under the scoreboard located in the outfield of Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field. In winter 2023, Mr. Stack was approached with a request by Rancho Cordova Little League to dedicate Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field to the honor and memory of former Rancho Cordova Little League President Dennis Lamontia, who passed away in July 2022. Dennis Lamontia was a dedicated member of the Rancho Cordova community and Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. For many years, he served as both president and treasurer of the Rancho Cordova Little League and the Cordova Junior Lancers Football Program. The sign will read, "The dedication of this field is in honor and memory of Dennis Lamontia for his contributions and commitment to Rancho Cordova Little League, March 4, 2023." This dedication request is consistent with the district's policy for volunteer projects less than $15,000 or improvements on district-owned property. It should be noted at this time that the Rancho Cordova Little League is not requesting Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field be officially renamed after Dennis Lamontia. Should that request be received, Rancho Cordova Little League shall be directed by CRPD staff to complete an application to naming park or facility after a person, uh, which will be available. I conclude my report. I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Does any member of the board or have any questions?
Yes, well, that sign will be permanently fixed, so if we ever move that scoreboard, the sign will stay with the scoreboard, right?
That is my understanding correct, okay. Or Secretary Sloan? Um, how big is this sign?
Uh, I know that they haven't made an ultimate decision yet. Um, they talked about four by three, uh, but it will hang directly underneath the scoreboard.
Was it like a banner-type sign?
That's the initial idea is to post a banner under there.
Can you read it from home, right?
Uh, I'm not sure. I can certainly find out.
Well, I've been wondering whether
Yes.
I thought it was more of a permanent type plaque thing. And if it was going to be something that would be no one would even see it unless you're catching a ball out in the center of the field.
Right.
Field, no one from the audience or people walking around.
My understanding is that you will be able to see, you know, from the bleachers. That's their intent.
Because are you familiar with the scoreboard? There's two poles, so they're at the Rancho Cordova sign that extends. Yeah, it's pretty wide, and they're going to move the Rancho sign down and put Dennis above there.
And it's going to be black and white?
Black, yes. We've got a copy of it. Give me a person, Ben.
This is the color that they cut off. It's like a Oh, I hear everybody. Ms. Jones, do you have any public comment on this item?
I do want to note for the record, we are having severe technical difficulties and the Zoom platform is cutting in and out. So at this time, I do not see any requests, but we do have to note that technical difficulty for the record because the meeting is supposed to pause according to state law. So as right now, we're still online.
Thank you. So Ms. Jones, if we go into that, you will notify, so I can stop. Perfect. So here nothing from the public? Or does it mean there's, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution H1, the dedication of Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field in honor and memory of Dennis Lamontia and allow the Rancho Cordova Little League to install a memorial sign in his honor under the scoreboard located in outfield, Alstom Park Little League Baseball Field.
Thank you. Do I have a motion by Director Mattis? I will make the second. Roll call vote?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood is absent.
Hold on, hold on. There needs to be a space after his name and the comments and the word for.
Right, so they have made that correction. I think you can see it in the picture that I provided.
Thank you. Let's move on to item H2.
Thank you. Item H2 is to reschedule the May 17th and December 20th, 2023, regular meetings of the Board of Directors. So due to the annual CRPD conference, we are requesting that the May meeting be changed to Wednesday, May 10. At this time, City Hall Facilities has noted that council chambers and the community board room are not available, so the May meeting will take place in one of the American River rooms. And then due to the proximity to the holidays, we are recommending that the December meeting be changed to Wednesday, December of 13. And if the Board approves this, the meeting changes will be well-publicized for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions by the board, Director Mathis? Director Plumbin? By our Secretary Sloan? Um, I have done. Ms. Jones, anything from the public?
Seeing no requests.
Thank you. Um, only thing I have is May 10th is my birthday, and I would gladly spend it with you gentlemen and the rest of staff that night. German shock, baby, German shock. So do I hear a motion?
Uh, I motion to accept uh Resolution H2, reschedule the May 17th and December 20th, 2023, regular meetings of the Board of Directors.
I have a motion by Director Langin, or a second?
Second.
I have a second by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote?
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to item I, Board of Directors items.
Thank you. Item I1, Board Office Stores Appointments, Elections, and Ad-Hoc Committee Appointments. We have none at this time. Item I2A is regarding AB2449, remote meetings. In your packet is information included from CSDA and CRPD, and it's quite a lot of information. So I have distributed to the Board and public a consolidation of bullet points of the highlights for AB2449. And I will go ahead and present those to you. As of March 1st, 2023, at least a quorum, which is three, members of the Board must attend in person at one location within district boundaries. Standing committees are not eligible to meet remotely. In the event that the Zoom platform is disrupted, the meeting will recess and no further action will be taken until the connection is restored. Kind of interesting. Remote participation shall be allowed only for specific reasons. These are known as just cause or emergency circumstances. And notification must have been provided at the earliest opportunity possible. Notifications must not disclose diagnoses, disabilities, or other confidential medical information. In the case of emergency circumstances, the Board must take action in open session at the beginning of a meeting and vote whether to approve each request on a case-by-case basis. In the case of just cause, it may not be used more than for two meetings per calendar year. And directors attending remotely must keep video and audio on and must disclose the presence of and relationship to any individual in the remote meeting room that is 18 years or older. So these are a lot of updates for the Brown Act that we wanted to make you aware of going forward with remote meetings. We will have to keep all this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
And then also, if you do it remote, that location has to be public as well, too.
It does, but we do not have to allow the public to attend the remote location.
If Zach was in the house, you would have to.
Just go. Even if they're not, they're like, they're quiet. Oh, really? You know, if I'm not, I'm in a closed room?
Yes.
That is, that's the location.
And he's a voting, he's involved, the voters are voted.
Oh, why?
Yes.
So we have two additional items. It's the Board, new Board Member Orientation, which should place on February 7th, and that's for our Directors Langin and Mattis, and also for them to report out on their AB1234 Ethics Training.
Director Mattis, start with the bureau on those two?
Oh, it was, it was interesting. It was interesting being on this side of it now. I've been putting it together with, with my experience. So it was fun to go through it. Learned a lot. That was the important, some things I didn't know, so that was good to keep aware of in this. We're filling in the waters in this new position, so it was definitely, definitely a good, very worthwhile training.
Director Langin?
Um, I would say, uh, the orientation was great. Uh, last Tuesday, the 7th, uh, it was great to just learn more about everyone's role specifically. Um, and just more about the district as a whole. Um, and uh, just to see everyone work together. So that was, that was really cool and just very informative. Um, not going to lie, I left going, oh my goodness, my brain. But that's okay, because you gave us the packet. And so, you know, every couple of days, I pull it out and like add another 10 pages. It's good. Uh, the ethics training was, was, um, it was good. It was good just to be able to, in the middle of it, to kind of go, okay, well, this is how this would apply to this. It's how this would apply to that. And so really, in my brain, being able to connect the art work to all that.
Great, thank you. We want the item B, uh, Community Activity Reports and Comments. We will start down at the far end with Director Mattis. We will start down at the far end with Director Mattis.
Uh, joined our, uh. In Gold River, I went to the, uh, uh. Gold River Association, their quarterly meet and greet. So that was good to kind of introduce myself, um. Cause I'm also an N H O A board member, but also to go. As a park member, introduced myself, and I had a couple of questions about the tree in the park. I told them the park is, was working on it, and sure enough, that Monday, they were out there, so that looked really good. So I was very happy about that. Um, other than that, that's, that was it. Thank you.
Director Langen.
Yeah, so, uh, the Rosemont Community Association meeting, um, February second, um, I gave a few updates about the sports court. Um, and as well as the Butterfly Garden, getting prepared for the peace pools. Uh, and when I talked about the sports court, they were all very excited. And I heard a lot of cheers and hand raised, so it's via Zoom, so, so that was a very, very exciting, good, and, um. You know, as well to, you know, um, I know Terry put a lot of work into that. Um, and so, you know, just thank her once again for all of, all of that work that she did there. Um. And then I would like to bring up two items to be put on, uh, next, uh, month's agenda if possible. Um. Uh, the first one would be, uh, changing the day, uh, of the week. We have our board meetings and then the second one would be to have an invocation before we start our work.
Great, thank you. Our recommendation is given to staff to put on to a future one, one meeting. Thank you. Secretary Sloan.
Okay, on the January twenty-first, I, uh. Go about to Heron Land Department. To attend the International Kite Festival. Which, uh, to put on by the Sacramento Telegata Association. And, uh. It was, it was really interesting because there was a, a lot of people there, a lot of tides, a lot of things going on. It's a beautiful day. It was like right after the rains. We had, you know, it was like. Perfect timing. And when one thing was missing, and that was wind. And it's not easy to have a kite festival if you don't have wind. So I mean, it was probably frustrating for a lot of the, the younger people. They almost had to just keep running around and keep tied up in the air. A few were up there. If they get up high enough, they were staying up. Um. That was, I know they're appreciative of, of having that space in order to have that, um, event. Um, on January twenty-fourth, I attended the RACA Screen Committee meeting. And, um. And one of the things on the agenda, I guess. A Jones was, was chairing the meeting and she had a conversation earlier in the day with our Patrick Larkin, our general manager. And talking about the, uh, the Cassis property. And so. Patrick Larkin really informed them of all, all the issues that was going on. They were very appreciative. And, um. Basically, uh, we're dealing with, uh. Very scenic part of the, of the. Of the community that's gonna be either. Put into a lot of homes or, or it's right on the issue. We don't know how right now. But the one issue that we're, we're dealing with is the Quimby, uh. Amount of land dedication and right, right now with the newest proposal, they only have one point nine acres. The park when it should have been four point zero seven acre of a park. So we're gonna make sure that they, whatever happens, that we get all the dedicated land that we want to deal with them. Make a park. Um, the next day, the next day. Oh, January thirty-first, um, I was able. Chair, Vice Chair of Danzel and I and staff and Mr. Larkin. Were able to walk the, the property at True Mark. And, um. Beautiful, beautiful area, beautiful, you know. I mean. Laura Taylor pointed out, as you look across the river. There's the blue herons that are nesting in the, the trees and above it. It's almost like, oh, you're kidding me, I. You know, you, I wish she had binoculars. I wish I had binoculars, but I'd like to, on my camera, actually, to get some nice shots of that. Cause there were nests up there and you saw the silhouettes and the birds and it was, it was something that was. Just so natural that you just love it, pristine. And, um, so it's something that we're gonna be taking a look at in the future, the development of that property and. All things, I think it's a twenty acre parcel at this point, and we're gonna see how much. It's gonna be left open to nature. Um, on, on February ninth, I attended, uh, It Takes a Village Neighborhood Group Meeting. And, um. It was, that was another, uh, interesting meeting because of. I was able to meet some people that I've never met before and, uh, discuss. We're dealing with Lincoln Village Park, Community Park. And they started in the meeting, they asked all the people that attended to. What's their wish list for the, for the park? So I've got some bullet points I'm gonna share with, uh, you know. Staff, Director Larkin. And, um. I mean, they want a lot, but we can give them some. We can't give them all. There's some issues that we wanna look into that part. It, it's an older community park. And it's got some aging, this, you know, uh, amenities in it. And so we can do some cosmetic fixing up. That would be great. We'll just take one, one step at a time on that. How we doing it. But I, I am gonna plan on a walk through with the neighborhood people and. Cause they did mention there was some area that they was talked about. Some rusty equipment, and I don't know what they were talking about. That's, I will email them. See what that was. Um, on February tenth, I was able. Fortunate to attend the Black History and Beyond Event here at City Hall. And I was blown away by a great, powerful, empowering event. Um, Director, Vice Chair Dan was there and our district manager, Adrian was there and. If you weren't there, you missed a little, little interesting, uh, presentation. There was a, uh. There was a spoken word presentation, like six or seven, seven people up the avenue. There were, they, people came out of the audience, like, um, spoken word. And there was a choir and there was a drum corps from Grobahaie. And, um, comedian. It was really a nice event, so, uh. So, good song.
Thank you. Um, my events this, this month were the walk through the Cassis property. Um, it was nice to walk the property. I, growing up in Ranch Carova, I've been on that property many times, picked walnuts as a kid out of the orchards that were, that are still there. Um, with permission, of course. But, uh, from the family, um, so it was, it was nice to be able to. Bring some insight to the staff that had never been out there and they, they got to see, you know. The last piece of, you know, rural, you know, rural front that's not. Nobody's ever really been out to except for, you know, a few fishermen. Basically, there's some fishing trails still out there, things like that. It's really, it's really, um, majestic and just nice, you know. A big hill to walk down, big hill to walk up, but other than that, pretty, uh, pretty nice out there. But it was interesting to see the development that, that's being planned out there, um. Like Secretary Sloan said, uh, one point nine acres and it's supposed to be a little bit better than that, almost double. Just trying to figure out, looking at where they propose parks to be, where, you know, where. Different ways that we think that would be utilized better for the community. Um, that is our, our job as park providers is definitely to, uh. Do that and give insight. And the other thing is I did, uh, also attend the. Um, Sacramento Urban League's Black History and Beyond Event. I was invited by School Board Member Chris Clark. Uh, was here at City Hall on February tenth. Great event, uh. They. Had local, local, uh, urban artists that were showing off their pieces. Out here in the, uh, lobby. Great artwork, um, the, the room, we were in the American Room Room. Comedians, spoken word, um. Gospel choir, everything was very empowering, um, still.
Okay, we apologize to the public. We are noting that we went down at seven thirty-two P M and we are back in session at seven thirty-eight P M.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go back to item, uh, J, comments by staff on.
Thank you. Item J one is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report for February, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thanks, Ms. Jones, and we're gonna speed talk through this one. So before we go down. Um, beginning on February twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three, CRPD residents will be allowed to submit an application. To CRPD to nominate an individual, uh, to have a park or facility named after them. The application period will last from, uh, February twenty-first through April twenty-first. Uh, at the deadline, there will be an ad hoc committee that is formed and assigned most likely either in. March or April for the two board members that are assigned to that to review the applications and then establish a list. For potential names for this new policy. Uh, we also have been working with Gates and Associates, our optimized plan consultant. They are, uh, through the stakeholder, community outreach and facility and conditions and inventory phase. We are also working with them on some finance reports. A summary report will be coming to the board, uh, in March or April. We're hoping that we can, April at this point. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. Uh, we also, um, just to get a little more clarity on the discussion earlier about the True Mark Cassis development. It is a preliminary application. It is not an actual application to be considered or vetted through. Um, this new application is just that, it's a new application. And so, uh, if and when it does become, uh, something that is a formal application. We will be looking to work with a developer on, uh, you know, getting land dedication appropriate to the calculations. For the units that they'll be proposing. So what's in front of you today, as I mentioned, is a preliminary application. It is not an active. Uh, application where we would make a formal comment on at this point. Um, but I appreciate, one, uh, we'll be prepared to, uh, have the voice of the community. Uh, drive the decisions that our CRPD will be looking at as it relates to the parks. Uh, we. Had a great, uh, Court of Recreation Parks Foundation Board Meeting. They are moving in a direction of creating a new membership fundraising strategy. Uh, where they're gonna be soliciting, uh, memberships for being a part of the foundation to help support our, uh, scholarship programs. And also some, uh. to help support our scholarship programs, and also some special projects that are needed by the district, so I'm looking forward to that. Staff has started discussion, discussing the 65th anniversary. There'll be more details on what that party will look like. We're aiming for most likely late summer, fall, and more information to come. The 65th Anniversary Logo is on our website. And there's also a click on where it will show you some history, and thank you Shelby for an awesome logo that was designed by you, it's really nice. We also have interviewed some folks this past month, we are interview crazy at this point. Just today, we offered a position for Associate Planner in Park Planning and Development, a long awaited position that we've been looking to fill, and I believe she accepted the offer, so we're looking forward to onboarding a new person to help with that tremendous workload coming forward. The also, we, this past month negotiated and agreed to a new IT service contract called Apex, I sent the board the contact information for you to create any tickets or reasons for if you have any IT needs, your laptop goes down, or your emails are working. Reach out to that Apex Consulting Group that we have onboard, and they will help you do that if you have problems with response, please let us know, and we will help facilitate that. So, starting today. So you have that in your notes. We also will be having a PMRID Oversight Committee, has open application periods. There are a total of three open seats this year for Oversight Committee. Two terms are expiring on June 30th, 2023. Zone A, Ranch of Cordova, and Zone C, Gold River. And on January 29th, 2023, we received resignation letter from the other Zone A seat in Ranch Cordova due to that person moving out of our jurisdiction. So there's the three things, so if you know anyone in those areas, please encourage them to apply. We have also a Budget and Finance Committee Standing Committee meeting coming up on March 6th. And then also a District Policy Standing Committee coming on March 14th. The first payment of tax revenue was deposited in January, and it's exceeding our budget projections. I believe the number is 600,000 over last year's revenue that we took in for property tax, so obviously there is tremendous growth in our district, and it's reflecting through the property taxes that we're collecting. We are also working on the Grand Line 208 Arista del Sol Community Park Community Outreach and Design. We met with the consultants this past week, they have two conceptual designs of the park that we're tweaking at this, they're going to try to get it within the budget that we have allocated. So once we have that tweaked, we will go back out to the community and have the next follow-up Community Outreach Meeting. We received confirmation that we received $250,000 from Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in ARPA, which is the COVID Relief Funds for the Rosemont Courts Project, which we're very excited about. We also have a application that will be going out to the Williamson Park, the east side for approximately 600,000 is the ask, and that is going through Mark Eaven, who is a resident volunteer in that area. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt Haven, thank you. Who will be working on soliciting, getting some community support petitions, support letters in order to apply for that. So we're thankful and grateful for that. The Williamson Project is coming along well, the sound walls are now completely installed. We are looking to do a tree planting on April 1st in the morning which will round out a lot of the completion of that park. Once that is completed, we will look to do a ribbon cutting to, you know, obviously bring it back and, and celebrate that accomplishment. We also have the Fennishfield Park Improvement Project, it's close to be completed. We have inspections going on this week. Once we have those inspections cleared, we're looking to do a ribbon cutting celebration. We're aiming towards most likely the last week in March, but I'll give you more information as we look to plan that as well. And with that, I will turn it over to our amazing Director of Parks Recreation, Jill Dunn.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Directors. Community events, we've already talked about the Polar Bear Plush. Great event, looking forward to next year. Over the Court of Golf Course, we included on page 52 some pictures of the flooding. Just so you can have, you know, a snapshot of what, what the golf course looked like during those storms, so the flooding was the pictures that you're seeing was on the driving range, and on the number 18 green after those January storms. All of the water has receded, we're back to playing. We're still cleaning up some mess, you know, from the trees and some downed trees there, but overall, we're just glad that we're back to open and operating at the golf course, so good job by, you know, by the golf course staff, and then we're just waiting for Davey Tree to finish that up. You know, in that area. And then in recreation, still going strong in the recreation department, I did wanna just kind of point out one of the highlights in the team programs, which is the Hideout After School Program. It's kind of, you know, gaining some momentum. The Hideout's kind of hit or miss, whether or not the kids are gonna come, the deans are gonna come or not, but we are gaining some, you know, some momentum in this month. We were able to, you know, have a bunch of activities and games and clubs. They've, you know, had a drama club, a movie club, an art club, a gaming club, and so we're just, we're excited that we're able to give them the space after school to come and just be who they are and be themselves. And so, you know, again, happy that, that we're able to do that for them. And then as you can see, we have a lot of other youth and adult sports going on. Obviously, the senior center's back open after their, their holiday break, offering, offering green thumb lunches and special events. And then in the Parks Department, we're still cleaning up from the storm damage. For the most part, you know, we've got all, all of the debris off of, off, off of the ground. But we, we do have Davey Tree also out, making sure that they clean up the rest of the trees that are down. Really what's left is, Ulster should be close to wrapping up. We have Dave Roberts and Hagan Community Park. And then just so that you all know, Davey Tree will be back at a later time to remove the stumps and then either remove them or grind them, so that takes a little bit more time. So what Davey Tree is trying to do, not only for us but for everybody, is just get the big tree out of the way first. Make sure it's safe, and then they'll come back at a later time, and you'll see that at the golf course as well, so that's our first priority. And then our second priority is coming back and grinding the stumps, so just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Is the park district gonna get the chippings, cause I know that some of the parks, there's piles of it.
Yeah, so Jim, are we, are we taking the
There's only one park with a pile of chips, and that's at
Hagan?
Oh, Gold River.
Oh, okay.
And what we're gonna do there is, we're gonna leave the chips there and spread them out in that area, because that's a natural area there, and then eventually we'll be planting a few trees in that location.
Have they also taken some church to Hagan?
All the chip coming to Hagan, and some are going to lose the property.
The park that we left them there was the Gold River, the rest of them are either go to Hagan Community Park, because we have an area there where we can dump them, and it sounds like some of them are going to Williamson as well. It's a great question, thank you. And then for your special event invitation, we've got a couple of senior center activities going on with the Mardi Gras Party on February 15th, and St. Patrick's Day, Matt Cadell's favorite holiday, on March 15th. And then like Patrick mentioned, the William H. Williamson Park Tree Planting on Saturday, April 1st, and we'll get some more details coming up here in the next month or so. With that, that concludes our report, thank you.
Let's move on to item K, original items.
Thank you, item K1 is Articles, Correspondence, and Public Outreach, we have two articles and two newsletters, and item K2 is your calendar.
Thank you, ma'am. It looks like we have reached that point, not letter L in the German. So I would like to call this meeting finished until the regular scheduled meeting of March
15.
15 at 6:00 PM. Hoping no technical difficulties, this meeting is adjourned.